Hey, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 8th, 2021 Special City Council Meeting and Work Session. This session will be conducted remotely, and council members will only participate electronically. For those of you in online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website: And if by chance you joined using any other link, we encourage you to log off and then come back into the meeting using that website. Public comment on any item appearing on the agenda may also be sent to publiccomment@louisstonmaine.gov during or at any point during the meeting, and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. And members of the public who do wish to make a comment are encouraged to raise their hand. With that said, let's move to agenda item, the only agenda item for the special meeting. Resolve authorizing the transfer of $5,000 from miscellaneous services to support the bicentennial main state parade events. And I believe we have Mike Dusty joining us.
Mike should be on his way in.
Okay.
So I think last meeting, Mr. Mayor, you had requested, based on a request from the Downtown Association, some funding to assist in the parade, which is now kind of on back on track to the original scope of the parade. And I think that there's the introduction, and I think Mike's now joined us.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Dusty.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So again, I'm Mike Dusty. I'm the Board Chairman of the Downtown Lewiston Association. And I mean, due to the uniqueness of the situation, this is bit of, it's going to seem more like a workshop type of presentation, but it does require some immediate action depending on the direction that this council wants to go in. As we're all aware, the bicentennial parade has been rescheduled for August of this year. And recognizing the tremendous opportunity this presents, but also the urgency for pulling together an event to capitalize on it, Mayor Care did reach out to the DLA to see if we could help the city enhance beyond just the scope of the parade. It's all very, very sudden. This is information that city administration, the mayor, council was only made aware of within the last two weeks. It's unexpected, but you know, if Lewiston wishes to take full advantage of the bicentennial parade by hosting a celebration right in our downtown, you know, the opportunity is here. The Downtown Lewiston Association, the way that we see it, the city can go one of three different ways. And they're, yeah, one of three different ways. One, we can host a large scale event on Lisbon Street that's focused on families. This would be a signature event, the likes of which we haven't seen in several years. An opportunity that we would be exploiting that we might not see for several more years. The DLA is prepared to make that happen in its entirety, take on the entire workload. However, the total cost the city should anticipate is probably going to be around $10,000. And this is going to be a combination of in-kind overtime expenses from departments like Public Works and Lewiston PD. It's going to include foregone permitting fees and licensing fees, but a majority of it would be direct funding. The second option is the city can do something that would be significantly smaller and less coordinated, but utilize city staff. DLA can make some suggestions, working with city staff, offering guidance. And I think that something could be done for likely half the amount that I just spoke of, but it would require more staff time because the DLA would be serving in an advisory role rather than a all encompassing project management role. The third option is the city can just let the parade be the feature and perhaps waive some of the smaller fees so that the restaurants that are in the immediate area can be a little bit more flexible to to capture the opportunity that that is presented by this parade. Again, you know, the DLA can make some suggestions to city staff, connect the restaurant owners with that staff. And this would require almost no funding expenditures. But like I mentioned, you know, foregone permitting fees, licensing, things of that nature, but very, very low ticket items. And I know that this is a tremendous amount to kind of absorb. So I guess I can, I can kind of pause there and see what feedback there there might be from counselors. This was not intended to be an all or nothing conversation, but but rather really a, an announcement of of the situation that we're in. You know, we have a very tight timetable, and we're talking about planning a very large scale event in two and a half months, but planning an event for the summer of 2021, but starting in the summer of 2021. In the letter that was included in your council packet, I mentioned this in the second paragraph under the challenges is that, and I guess I'll just read it very quickly, is by this time of year, most bands that would be a draw to an event are already booked out for the summer. The same applies to food trucks, and that's in any year, not necessarily a COVID somehow affected COVID year. This year is no exception, and with the recent announcement of state COVID restrictions easing, there has been a very high demand for both food trucks and performers. And I would extend that to really any amenity that could attract patrons to a business. Restaurants have been closed or reduced for over a year now. And now they're seeing an opportunity to really capture that pent up feeling that people have. And what they're doing is they're booking everything that they can to attract people to 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 come to their establishments. So it's, it's not an ideal position that we're in, planning an event with this time and with this timing. But I do believe it's possible. And you know, if the council wishes, the Downtown Association is is here to step up and and make it happen. So like with that, I'd like to kind of open it up and see, you know, what some comments and some some questions might be. And I'll leave it to Mark for you to direct the conversation from here.
Thank you. Counselor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, that's a great presentation. I think it's really exciting to think about the possibility of this coming to Lewiston. I'd love to see this happen. I am curious to hear from you about what is the preference of the DLA? When I think about these three options, that's one of my thoughts. And then as I was thinking about option number two, and you were talking about, you know, this could be smaller scale because we could be using city staff. But then I think like this event's on a Saturday. Am I correct? And so, you know, it comes to mind for me, just this is the business part of me, I think like, well, but that would mean like overtime. You know, like, is it really going to be half the price kind of thing, you know? That's where my head goes, Heather. So I think, you know, is it really a pared down version? You know, and is it worth, I mean, I hear you're talking about that first option being 10 grand, but how much of it is really direct funding? When we take away some of that stuff? So just those are my thoughts, Mike.
Yeah, if I, Mark, if I could speak to the second part of the question?
Sure. And let me just add real quick, and maybe Dale can talk about this afterwards. But there will be staff overtime on an event this big regardless, you know, they're going to be coming in anyway. So.
All right.
Yeah. All right. Go ahead, Mike. Thank you.
Yeah. So to kind of speak to, and we'll say an itemization of that $10,000, I would expect that direct funding, we'd be looking at 7,500 and the remainder being a vast majority of overtime expenses from predominantly Lewiston PD. Because we'd be looking at utilizing this last block of Lisbon Street. And we're talking about a tremendous amount of people. We would want to have, we would want to have a good police presence just because of the potential of the volume of people. I mean, the numbers for estimates for this attendance for this parade have been all over the map. Last year, it was talks of 50 to 100,000 people. I think something that's a more realistic number would probably be, you know, assuming that the weather is great, we could be looking at 20 to 30,000 people. You get 10% of them walking down this last block of Lisbon Street, you have a completely full street of people. So there would be some PD presence that would be required. And the 7,500 is not, I don't want to say that it's not a hard number because I would want to see that number allocated. But our goal would be to spend as little of that as is possible with, without sacrificing on the quality of the event. I mean, we recognize the the budget situation that that all of you have been through in the last couple of months. You know, our board and our organization, we're all taxpayers as well. So we want to be cognizant of that and be good stewards of taxpayer funding. But there are just costs that you just can't get around considering the time and the timing.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Counselor Jalinas?
No, thank you.
All right, thanks. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mike, for a great explanation and and set of options here. Can you just remind us about past events that DLA has done that are similar? And what the, what the size of those have been? And if you have it off the top of your head, any costs associated with those?
Yep. So the the single event that compares to to this in terms of scale would be the Trek Downtown Event from 2018. That was an event that the total cost was around $6,000. That was also an event that was set up for this volume of people because we didn't know what to expect in that kind of scenario. That was a first time that the Trekkers were going to be coming through Lewiston. So we, we built an event that that could accommodate if 5,000 people showed up because that's a worst case scenario. We didn't have that kind of turnout. We actually, over the course of the entire day, we probably had a little under half of that. I can say that beyond that one event, our board members that have been, that will be participating in this do have experience with large scale events. We have Sandy Markey as an example, who coordinate, well, built and coordinated and facilitated the film festival when that was born, in addition to facilitating a film at the same time. We have John Grenier, who coordinates the the CRT, which is a bicycle race that takes place right here in the in the heart of downtown. I myself, if we go use the Wayback Machine, this happens to be our 10 year anniversary of the Art Walk. And I was on the founding committee for that and the facilitator for the first two years. And if the counselors and staff recall, I believe it was in 2014, I was on the board for LA Arts, and LA Arts did the ICE Festival. And for the first two years, I was the chief coordinator of that event. So does that, does it?
Yeah, I just wanted for the benefit of the public to to hear that track record and and know that's why we trust you all, or at least I trust you all to to go forth with whatever funds are allocated tonight and do a really nice job. I think folks know the events more than they know about the organization, and so I just wanted to to make that more evident for folks. I'm, I'm definitely willing to provide up to the 7,500 hard money, hard money with possible other soft costs involved. Recognizing it is a tough time, but at the same time, the businesses down there could use the boost and could use the publicity of this sort of event as well as food trucks or performers or anyone. People are so thirsty for outdoor programming this summer, so I feel like you all would be able to pull something nice together. So I'm definitely in favor, and I appreciate all that you all have already done. So thanks.
And the nice thing about this event is not only will it benefit our downtown businesses, but it truly will benefit many businesses throughout the entire city. So thank you. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks. Before I forget, Mike, thank you for all that you and the association do, not just for this, you know, upcoming event, but for everything in general. You guys rock. So when we talk about building up neighborhoods and building up communities in our city, you guys are just a prime example of that. And so we appreciate you. I guess in regards to this, I'll name a price. I'd be willing to support it. I can go up to 10 grand if you want. I think it's worth it to me. Spend the money that way. I look at this as an investment. People have strong opinions of Lewiston. They just do. And so no one's going to leave, if they come to this event, they're not going to leave it feeling the same they did before. You're either going to have a great experience in Lewiston, and the reputation is going to change in their minds, and it's going to help our city grow. Or it's going to be a bad experience, and it's going to hurt our reputation even further and set us another five years back, maybe more. So we absolutely have to get this right. To me, I would rather we not do this at all, not host it than do it wrong. So the more support we can give to the Downtown Lewiston Association, the better. Any other group that wants to be involved as well, I really think that, you know, 10 grand, I'd even be willing to go more than that. This is just such a huge moment for us and our city and our and our identity that we, we need to do as much as we can. So I guess from a counselor perspective, I'm 110% supportive of anything the Downtown Lewiston Association wants to do. You guys have a great record of of making good projects like this, you know, happen. So I guess whatever it takes, I guess. So if that helps city staff with any direction, I'm fully supportive behind this. I'm trying to think if there are any other questions that were asked to be answered. I don't think so, but so I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Mike, can you just share a little bit what the response was from the downtown businesses? One, how big of an organization is that? And I mean, are they pretty excited about this possibility?
I mean, so I guess we have a board of eight. We have, I don't have the number directly in front of me, but between 30 and 40 members here in the downtown. And I'll, I'll be perfectly frank, you know, the board was not incredibly excited initially because it is a massive event. I mean, for for people that have planned large scale events, you, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a bittersweet opportunity. You recognize it is a monumental opportunity, but you also recognize the challenges immediately. And I think even the, the proposal in front of the counselors right now about the 5,000, that's, you know, this is all information that is less than a week old, and, you know, this document is already out of date. That's how, that's how much has to go into the planning for something like this. I met with Mark and Dennis and Dottie and Janet on Tuesday of last week. On Wednesday of last week, Mark asked me for an itemization or a potential itemization. On Thursday morning, I submitted the page four of your packet to to Dennis. On Thursday afternoon, I had called a meeting with Sandy Markey and with Linda Scott. For those of you that don't know, Linda Scott was on the the 2020 planning for the bicentennial. She was a real workhorse in coordinating an event very, very much like what we're talking about now. She put in countless hours. So on Thursday afternoon, the three of us sat down to go over Linda's notes from last year to take a look at, you know, what are some of the components that she was thinking of? And, you know, the overarching ideas and what were some of the potential costs and the the plausibility of some of those ideas? And it was, it was very short amount of time in that meeting that we realized just how difficult this was going to be and that there's a very high probability of planning an event starting in June for August, that we're going to have to pay for things that we would otherwise charge to participate. We have, so on Thursday, we had that meeting. On Friday, we started some initial outreach just to kind of test the waters. We outreach to two larger bands. Both of them are totally booked for the summer. We did four preliminary calls for food trucks. Three out of four were a hard no. The fourth one wasn't a yes because they had other things in the works. They were maybe, get back to us. We even reached out to our local Mr. Drew and his animals too, and he's already booked. So the challenges for this are really, really tremendous. But I still, I mean, we, and and that, you know, coming back to your question, Mark, that was the first thing on the board's mind is like, how are we going to be able to pull this off? Is the city going to be able to to fund this to the level that it needs to be? Or are we going to be looking at, well, you know, here's $2,500. It's a tough budget season, which would be understandable. And in that particular case, there was, there was no appetite for it because we already knew that, you know, that's a, we were destined to fail without significant funding. So really, the board was was really on edge. And, you know, we had come up with some preliminary numbers and said, well, this, these numbers hit our comfort level for the the potential for some of these costs to balloon much, much further than than they would if we were planning in in January. So I mean, if this council were to come back and say, well, can you do it for, you know, can you do the large scale event? But can we take that number and scale it down? Then there really isn't an appetite for this because of the challenges. But I think that the numbers that we are, that I'm speaking of tonight are such that we're confident that we'll be able to put something together that will make the city proud, that will be a real benefit to the city. So it's, it's, like I said, it's kind of a bittersweet thing when when an opportunity like this falls in your lap.
All right. Thank you. Deputy City Administrator Dotay, you had your hand up, and you want to chime in on especially the overtime issues?
Yeah, just as I was going to clarify a couple of those, there, there will be a fair amount of city staff involved. All, and it gets back to that, putting our best foot forward. We're going to have a huge influx of people into our community, some for the first time, some for, and as Mike said, there's some have perception. We will have Public Works and Police regardless of which option we take. We also, there may be elements that spill outside of the downtown. So there's the parade, then there's the festival, but how big is the festival? So one thing Dennis and I and Kathy spoke about earlier today that one possibility or one suggestion of the council might be to fund something up to something like 10,000 and allow the administrator to kind of work with Mike and the rest of our team, work with Mike and others, and put that money where where it can best be used. So like I said, if he can save some money here and there on one thing, maybe there's something outside of the downtown that enhances parking or does something else, or there's some, we talked about some crafters coming into a a location, maybe in the downtown, but if the downtown falls somewhere else, I think that would just give us the flexibility to get the biggest bang for our buck if if the administrator had that ability.
Okay, thank you. And I would assume the Downtown Business Association is going to need to have access to this cash to lock people in. Is that correct?
Or for something like this, if if we were talking about a six month planning period and we were starting in in January, then I think there would be a lot of maneuverability for working with the city and and kind of negotiating that relationship considering the amount of time that we have and the time of year that we're starting. I mean, I certainly encourage oversight and transparency and would want to take as many steps as we could to be as transparent as possible. But we're going to need the flexibility to be able to make snap decisions and, you know, enter into contracts in a remarkably short amount of time. This is the time of year where you can make a phone call on a Monday and say, yes, XYZ is available for for August. Hold that date. Four days later, make that same call, and they're booked. That's, that's the reality of of starting in June. So it's, it's, it's a difficult position to be in. But I understand the necessity for transparency, and I would want to find a way that we can, we can be as transparent as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way I look at this, there are three ways of handling this. We either do it right, we do it wrong, we don't do it at all. And I don't believe the latter is an option. I think we have to participate in this. Otherwise, we're going to be shunned by everybody else that participates. So that leaves the two options, do it right or do it wrong. I say, let's do it right because if we do it wrong, the Counselor Jensen's point, it's going to leave a bad taste with a lot of people, and I don't think we can afford that. So I could go along with the, with spending the 10,000 if we need to do it. I think we have to do it right. We shouldn't go in this half cocked at all. We should win it all the way and go for the gold. I think it could be a very good thing for the city. I think there are civic organizations out there. I think of outfits like the Shrine, that they'll be participating, but I know they have other resources that would be available above and beyond parade units and stuff like that. I'm sure there are other civic and social groups out there that would be willing to get involved. So let's, let's go for the gold, and you give us an amount you think you need, Michael, and I think we can probably, well, I say this, run this past Heather first because if she says yes or no, that's, that's the final part of it right there. But if she says yes, you'll get it, I'm sure. Thank you.
That's actually a good segue into our finance director to hear her thoughts on this.
Hard thing to plan, Mr. Mayor. Hard thing to plan.
I'm com- I'm comfortable with going up to the $10,000. And then we can work out the bookkeeping logistics between the association and the city when when the time comes.
Okay, thank you. And I see our city administrator nodding his head. Yes.
I, I'll just, I did not hear the the whole conversation. I understand you knew I worked out, but I think I, I know where we landed and I'd support him as well, of of up to 10,000.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray?
I was hoping to make a motion to approve the resolve authorizing the transfer of $10,000 from miscellaneous services to support the bicentennial main state parade events.
Okay, thank you. I'll need a second before.
I would second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Clement. And Mike, you had a response, and then I'll go right to Counselor Petten Gill.
Yes, I mean, there's one thing that I cannot stress hard enough, and this is, this is really at the the bottom of that, that letter that's included in your packet is, is we still cannot guarantee that we'll be able to pull this off. And if that's the case, then any funding that is allocated or any funding that is distributed would be returned to the city of Lewiston. But I want to make sure that everyone has very realistic expectations. I'm not coming here to promise the earth, the stars and the sun and and say, no matter what, you know, if you make this decision, you're going to get the best event that there is. If we can't pull together an event that this stand, the the standards of this city will dictate, then we will be coming back to you and saying, we just can't do it the way that we had anticipated. And perhaps with some other ideas to help guide staff or or other options. But I just wanted to make that, make sure that that's, that's very clear.
Either way, we're getting bubbles though, right? Okay. Counselor Petten Gill?
Thank you. Just to to go back to Dusty's point, would it be more appropriate for instead of to allocate just the 10,000 straight to have it be up to $10,000? And then that way, the, the city staff can do what they need to do?
I mean, I don't see an issue with that up to 10. I mean, because like, like Mr. Dusty said, you know, there's a possibility they could negotiate something. It might be a little less, so that would provide flexibility. And I, and I think so the the funding is we're authorized in $10,000, but some of that might be overtime cost. So it's, it's not all specific to the DLA. I think, I think once, once we approve the 10,000, I think the next step would be for our city administrator to have a sit down with Mike and really kind of talk about the logistics.
Yeah. If I can, if I can just chime in, then it's been a long time because of COVID and the pandemic. But the council actually took action on the parade and did provide some support, in-kind service support already. So what we've now need to do, so I actually anticipate the bulk of this funding going towards post parade events and not overtime or salaries and that type of work. So but to your point, the mayor, I, I think the points well taken in terms of, there are, there may be other needs. I think Mr. Dusty has made a lot of good points that I think we're also experiencing with the short window of time that we're all trying to scramble. Things that may have been able to be worked out over a six month period are no longer an option. Things that may have uh been able to be worked out over a six-month period are no longer an option. And we may need to pay for those now to make the event or bring the amenities that we need, so um, or pay more than what maybe was anticipated a year and a half ago. So um, I think that flexibility is a key part. Um, and, and we would be supportive of that language of up to ten thousand. It, it's, that's fine as well.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none to the public? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
And word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dusty.
Um, I did have one other thing uh that I wanted to bring up because I don't know if it does need council approval for. Um, but a recommendation, and I haven't spoken to Dennis about this or Dale or Mark, um, so sorry for the blind side, but um, I would recommend that the city council authorize the city administrator to authorize at their discretion a temporary one-day exception for food trucks licenses and processes. Um, that all food trucks participating in this event and the parade will be exempt from all city of Lewiston licensing fees and inspections, providing they have been licensed in either Portland, Auburn or Augusta this calendar year. This could help expedite getting a very difficult, uh, the very difficult um food trucks. So might give some people some heartburn, but you know, the standards that Portland, Auburn and Augusta have are remarkably similar um to the city of Lewiston's. Um, but I wanted to uh put that out there.
So I do, so, well, I don't know. I mean, the city administrator, do you have the authority without council approval to kind of work through this? Or do you need something from the council?
Oh, I'm gonna, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to put our city clerk on the spot and see if she can guide here. I'm not sure honestly of, of the legal authority that I would have to even do that. So Kathy, is that something you can talk to a little bit?
Sure. My, uh, my recommendation, uh, Dennis, for the council would be, we have a city council meeting in one week. And so I don't know, um, you know, I don't know what sort of timeframe Mike needs, but if we could really toss that around at the staff level regarding the legalities, and I'd really like to have folks from Code um offer their thoughts, especially regarding the food safety and inspection piece. That's really my bigger concern is having that waived. Um, obviously the fee is not, but just sort of um taking a look at that. Um, and perhaps we could then put that on for action on uh June fifteenth and one week from tonight if that's acceptable.
I agree with that recommendation, Kathy. Thank you. I, I agree.
And I'm pretty certain staff is gonna do everything they can to try to make it as simple as possible for vendors, so. Uh, so Mike, uh, I, I guess at this point I would suggest you and Dennis connect maybe next Monday, just to kind of follow up on that.
Okay.
All right, uh, Mike, greatly appreciate the Downtown Business Association even considering doing this on such short notice and uh, I'm moving ahead with the idea that you absolutely will pull together uh some type of event that the city will be proud of. So none of that naysaying in the last sentence of your presentation.
That's the plan, Mark. That's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that uh completed, we'll move into our work session. And item A is a city charter review committee update.
Um, Mayor, city councils, I'll uh just intro the item real quick while Ed Barrett is being brought in. Um, it uh has been Chair of the Charter Review Committee. The committee started in March um and have been meeting since then um to review the charter. And what uh tonight will be is uh it uh will present an update um and take some feedback from the council um at this point. So I believe he's uh in live and on video, so welcome, Ed, and I'm gonna turn it over to you for the presentation.
Thank you, Dennis. So it's kind of deja vu-ish for me, but uh it's a pleasure to be here tonight and to see all of you again. Um, as Dennis mentioned, I'm the Chair of the Char- uh Charter Committee and uh the committee's asked me to come forward and give you a little bit of an update. Just so you all recall, the membership of the committee includes Linda Scott, Jennifer Williams, Frances Gagman, Patty Gagny, Steve Morgan and Roger Philippon. And I believe some of them are here in the audience tonight and may want to comment as we go through the presentation. We particularly wanted to come and make the presentation tonight because we want to ensure that options for this council are not foreclosed. Uh, it appears likely that uh the committee will be recommending some changes to the charter that cannot be done through an amendment, but that would require revision, and a revision would require a charter commission. And so I'll go through a little bit of that, um, tell you what the bigs, the big recommendation probably is going to be. And then there's one other recommendation we'd like to make that we think this council should act on. It's not a charter recommendation, but should act on prior to their term ending. So the first thing we want to bring up is staggered terms for elected officials. There's a great deal of support on the committee to move to staggered terms for both the city council and the school committee. We believe that would provide a lot greater uh stability and continuity between election cycles. And I think we've always been a little bit concerned given the amount of turnover that the council and the school committee has had in various elections. That one of the first things a new council coming in is faced with is the budget process. And if you have a lot of new council members in that process, I think that's really maybe putting a little bit too much of a demand on, on newly elected officials. There are a number of ways that that can be accomplished. I think one of the members of the committee really summed this up quite well. Um, he basically said that he supports the goal of staggered terms, but doesn't particularly, particularly like any of the options on how to get there. Um, so it does get a little bit complicated in that there are a lot of issues that have to be addressed. Um, for example, you have to look at the length of council terms or if there are elected official terms, which could be two, three or four years. Whether you want to have annual or bi- by annual elections. Um, whether you want to expand the size of the council and add some at-large positions to the council, which might work nicely with a, with a one-third up at a time system similar to what Portland and Bangor uh have with their councils. Um, and then there was also some discussion of how to uh d- address the mayor in all of these changes, the role of the mayor in all of these changes. In particular, his ability to vote on all issues. And if that is thrown into the mix, it gets even more complicated. So obviously, the charter committee cannot make a binding recommendation on this. Um, and a charter commission could look at all of the alternatives. We provided you a separate memo that discusses different approaches that might be taken. The one that kind of appeals seems to at the moment, and I will preface all of this by saying all final decisions haven't been reached. But the one that seemed to appeal to a lot of the folks on the committee was going to a nine-member council by adding two at-large counselors and having annual elections where basically you had one-third of the council up each time. Uh, there are obviously some issues with that. One is having, I'm sure Kathy would love having another election every year, municipal election. Um, but there were, there are positives and negatives to each option, and those are outlined in that memo. I don't think I need to, to spend a lot of time on this. Because if you wish to pursue staggered terms, a charter commission would have to do that, and they would not be bound by anything that was recommended by our committee or even by the council. So um, timing here becomes important because of, of the process for establishing a charter commission. If the council wished to go that route, it would first have to adopt an order providing for the charter commission. And that order would have to specify how the elected members of the commission are selected. There are a number of choices there. They could either be six members elected at large from the entire city. There could be seven members, one member elected from each ward, or there could be eight members, one, one of which would be elected at large, the others by ward. So you would have to make that decision. And then put on the ballot the question, which is, shall a charter commission be established for the purpose of revising the municipal charter? You do also have the option, then at some point you would have to elect the, the, the folks to the commission. That can be done either at the same election where the question about having the charter commission is on the ballot. So let's say you wanted to do it in November, you could theoretically have, you want to have a charter commission on the ballot, people could say yes or no. Then you would have an election for the positions on the charter commission, which obviously would only mean anything if the public voted to support having a commission in the first place. Alternatively, you could have the election for the charter commission at one election like in November and then follow it with the election of its members in, say, June with uh in conjunction with the, with the state uh primary system and maybe the school election. So you have those options. You also have uh three positions that are appointed to the charter commission. In our case, they would be appointed by the mayor. Um, one of those could be a municipal official, so it could be someone who, one of the members, member of the council or the mayor. But the other two would be uh just citizens. Um, and they would have to be appointed within thirty days of the election to establish the charter commission. So you run into this kind of interesting situation where Mayor Kair would be appointing those members, but there may be a different mayor in office uh by the time the, the rest of the commission is elected. So it's kind of a strange system that has to be done. But if you wanted to do the election for the members of the commission in November, you would have to start acting very quickly because you have to allow time for nominating petitions to be gathered, signatures to be turned in. That normally is a hundred and twenty days before the election. Um, so you would be looking at that, starting that process in July. That hundred and twenty days is not a totally fixed number. It could be a little bit shorter, but then you're compressing people's time. The committee thinks it's pushing it a little bit too much to try to have both the, the election, to have the charter commission and to elect the members in November. There's a couple of reasons for that. Obviously, this is gonna be at the same time that there's going to be other city elections. So interested parties will be potentially interested in a number of different things. They may want to run for council. They're running for council, they probably don't want to run for charter commission because that would create a problem if they were elected to both. Um, there also, quite honestly, hasn't been as much interest this, this time around in the work of the charter committee as there was ten years ago. Of course, it hadn't been done in a long time, ten years ago. So I'm not sure how aware the public in general is of uh, of what's going on and the kinds of issues that might be addressed in a charter commission uh doing a revision of the charter. So that's the process. We just wanted you to be aware of that so you weren't caught short uh in terms of time. So before I go into anything else, any questions about all that fun stuff? Okay. Um, the next recommendation, this is outside the scope of the charter really, but uh we did spend some time talking about council salaries, elected official salaries, and we feel that they should be adjusted. That can be done by the council uh to only take effect after your current term is over. Those salaries haven't been adjusted in some time, and we're recommending for your consideration, increasing the mayor, the, the salary of the mayor to seven thousand dollars a year and the salary of, of uh counselors and the school committee members to thirty-five hundred dollars a year. That can be done by ordinance. Like I said, it should be done before the end of this term, so it could take the effect in next term. We're making the recommendation because we recognize that this is a touchy issue for elected officials to take on. There's always a concern, I think, that the public may see this a, as, as an effort to take advantage of your position. I don't think that's the case. I think the committee in particular feels that there ought to be some additional compensation for people in elective office to at least partially offset some of the actual out-of, out-of-pocket costs and time that you devote to your positions. So that's a recommendation you're feeling you should go ahead and act on. Any question on that recommendation?
Counselor Ray?
Thank you. Um, can you remind us what the current uh stipends are for those positions? I was trying to look this up yesterday and I could not find it anywhere.
Uh, Kathy, you probably have the exact numbers, so I'll let you answer that question.
Uh, I believe it's twenty-seven hundred for a counselor and forty-two hundred for the mayor, but I'm happy to be corrected and we can certainly uh confirm and verify that. They're, they're paid out monthly.
And school committee members are lower than council, right, in terms of stipend?
Uh, to be honest, uh, counselor, we don't handle the school committee payroll, so I, I don't know offhand. I would have to look that up and verify that.
Okay, but the council could set the school committee stipend level, okay? Even though.
Yes, the council sets the, sets the salary level for all elected officials as well as for some appointed boards and commissions, like the planning board and, and finance committee.
Thank you.
Okay. We have also spent a lot of time looking at a lot of other issues, and as I said, we haven't come up with any final conclusions uh on a lot of these. And I thought the best way to perhaps present where we are is to go back over of the summary that I put together from your discussion a number of months ago about what kinds of issues you would like the charter committee to review. So going through those, um, one of the suggestions that came up at that workshop was reducing the age requirement to serve in elective office from twenty to eighteen. I will tell you that, that the committee is quite split on that. Um, and the people uh who support it are even a little bit nervous about it. So I'm not sure what the final recommendation will be. I think at the moment, we are leaning in the direction of recommending the age limit be reduced to eighteen. But that hasn't been by, that's one of the ones I'm not sure where we're gonna end up on. There were some questions about uh moving the school budget process around so that the ratification election can always be in the, with, in conjunction with the June primary. We don't have to really do that because the current charter would allow you to adopt the school budget uh at a time in May where it would, would still be able to be put on the June ballot, the primary ballot. So you have that option now. By practice, the council has tended to approve the school and city budgets at the same meeting, usually uh early in, in May. But if you adopt the school budget at the second regular meeting of the council in May, you could then schedule the budget validation election for the primary. Because it has to be held within thirty days of the date that you approved the budget. So you can do that without any change to the charter. I will note, however, that we are gonna be recommending some changes to the entire budget process because the state law governing how school budgets are adopted conflicts with our charter and therefore governs, and we would like to bring the charter into consistency with state law. So basically, that would eliminate the conflict that exists now about, does it take five votes? Does it take four votes? All of that happiness. And, and basically just say that we will be adopting the school budget in accordance with state law. There was some discussion of forfeiture of office due to conviction of a crime punishable by at least one year uh in, in, in office, one year in, in prison. Uh, basically, I was tied to the felony. We're gonna be suggesting returning to the old standard of uh conviction of an offense involving moral turpitude. One of the reasons that we went to the one-year uh penalty system was that there is no enforcement mechanism in the charter for forfeiture of office if there's a dispute. Um, so for moral turpitude is a, an inexact term that depends on what the courts eventually decide whether s- offense A is or isn't an offense of moral turpitude. So in conjunction with returning to the old standard, we're also going to include enforcement language in our recommendations. That basically will state that the council is the judge of its members. is the judge of its members' own qualifications and of their forfeiture or removal from, from office. So let's say that somebody says council member Hunter says she lives in Ward Seven, but she really has moved. She's really living over in Auburn. Um, council member Hunter says, oh, no, no, doesn't bring it up, doesn't want to bring it up, disputes it. This would allow the council itself to investigate and make a decision on whether that office had or had not been forfeited. And just to preserve some protection, uh, there would have to be a public hearing and it would also have to be a super majority vote to, uh, exercise forfeiture of office if somebody refused to admit to it or to take office, take steps to remove somebody from office for some other inappropriate behavior. That same standard would be also applied to the school committee and would also be applied to certain, uh, uh, appointed boards, particularly the ones in the charter. But in those cases, removal would have to be initiated by the appoint, appointing official. So the mayor would have to start the process of removing somebody from the planning board. He would then go to the council so that the council would actually handle the process, but the mayor would have to initiate it since the mayor is the appointing authority in that instance. So I think it's important that there be some kind of an enforcement mechanism there so that the council doesn't get caught on the, on the, well, somebody said this and we don't know. And even if we did know, we can't force anything. So this would be a way to bring it to a conclusion. There was a suggestion, we consider moving to rank choice voting. Committee had different opinions on this as well. Um, basically, uh, I don't think we're going to make a substantive recommendation because we don't believe that the technology is there yet to make that easy enough to, to avoid a major expense. Our understanding is Portland has to spend about fifty thousand dollars to have people bring in the equipment needed to do rank choice voting or the, the actual counting, uh, for their mayoral elections. Uh, our runoff election, uh, basically costs us a couple thousand dollars. So we just don't think the technology is there yet. Um, it's something that maybe, they, maybe people would like to revisit or should revisit at the point where our voting machines are updated or replaced with newer machines that have that capability. Uh, I will also point out that there was, uh, at least one member of the committee who felt like we should eliminate the requirement of majority election for the mayor and just allow the mayor to be elected by plurality. Uh, I don't think there's a lot of support on the committee for that, but it was another alternative, other positions, all of the council positions and school many positions are by plurality. The concern of, that I had in moving to plurality is that the barrier for getting on the ballot to, to run for mayor is relatively low. So it's not like at the state or federal level where you face some significant issues. You, number one, you have a a primary to get on the ballot as a Democrat or Republican, or you'd have to gather a lot of signatures. So we could easily end up with, uh, a large number of candidates running for office at some point. And potentially electing a mayor with a very, with a very significantly less than a majority, which I think would make the mayor a little bit less, uh, effective. Because it's that fact that he's the state, is the citywide elected official with majority support behind him that gives him some of the, uh, bully part pulpit that, uh, Mayor Kair has exercised for the last year and a half. Uh, another issue that came up was whether, uh, somebody who's, uh, currently elected and moves from a ward to another location in the city should be forced out. I know you've had some discussion about this in terms of just the whole residency issue. Our feeling is that if we were to recommend any change there, it would be perhaps if the person moves out of their ward during the last year of their term, that they would be allowed to continue in office. Because as you know, if that happens within the last year, the position is filled by, um, by the city council. And that has some certain issues associated with it as well. So that's one alternative there. Um, that we may be, that we are considering. I don't know for sure that we'll recommend that. But, uh, that perhaps tied in with the, uh, creation of an at-large council position would address some of that concerns of people who might be running and be forced to relocate and the difficulties that that can create. The, the, the charter has a requirement now, uh, that limits spending increase. So the GNP IPD that limits the overall expenditure budget and requires five votes to override it. Uh, we think there's a couple of, of issues with that. One is nobody really knows what the GNP IPD is. Um, and in fact, uh, sometimes we have acted on a number that was provided by the St. Louis Fed, which is a group that computes this only to find out later that they had revised it or to find out that they had not produced it, but in time for the budget, the date required in our charter, which I think is September. So the whole thing doesn't work. Nobody understands it and it's opaque. Secondly, it applies to expenditures, but I think for most people expenditures may not be the core of the issue. Rather taxes might be. So what the proposal we're looking at is to move off of the GNP IPD that would eliminate a footnote in the budget message, by the way, trying to explain it. And, uh, go to the CPI urban northeast. Consumer Price Index for, for, uh, the urban areas in the northeast. And to move that limitation from total expenditures and place it on the tax levy. So that, let's say that the, uh, CPI goes up two and a half percent, you could increase the tax levy to an half percent. But that might still be done at a time when that, when the expenditures either go up or down. Part of the reason for that is the whole expenditure budget is much more variable. You know, the state giveth and the state taketh away. Uh, so the state takes away revenue sharing and that creates a problem. And then when you turn around and give it all back, that automatically can push you over the spend, over the, over the expenditure limit if you want to spend it all. So anyway, that's a suggestion for consideration. Um, there was a suggestion to schedule the mayoral elections at a different time than the council elections. We don't support that. We don't think that's, uh, that would just create another whole set of elections. It would also, I think, reduce interest in the municipal election. Uh, suggestion that the charter be made gender neutral. And I will fess up, I screwed up there. There is one spot in the current charter where the mayor is referred to as he. That was supposed to have been changed in two thousand and ten, along with all of the other things that were changed then, that, that had gender references. And that one was inadvertently missed, so we can pick that one up and take care of that. Was also a suggestion of giving the council the option of either going to a charter committee every ten years or going directly to a charter commission. We feel like we ought to keep it the way it is because the charter committee could, in effect, do the groundwork as to whether or not a charter, uh, commission was required and also help prepare or lay out an agenda for that group to, to go through. Was also a suggestion, we make the mayor's position full-time. We don't support that. Uh, that would significantly change the system, but also I think make it interesting if for somebody who's got a job, uh, could they afford to run for mayor? Would that eliminate the possibility of people running for mayor? If they are, uh, have a private, their own business, uh, or a real estate agent or an attorney or some other kind of, of function like that. So anyway, that's where we are so far. There's a couple of other things that we're dealing with that, uh, aren't, weren't on the list. One is clarification of the mayor's appointment power. There has always been this ongoing struggle over ad hoc committees and who has the authority to appoint them. Uh, we have gone back and forth to some extent, at times the councils created an ad hoc committee and specified the method of appointment. Most of the time that includes a role for the mayor, but sometimes it also has included a requirement for council confirmation. Um, other times we have ba- basically just gone with the mayor. Had some discussion with the, with the city attorney. He believes that under the current charter, uh, all appointments for ad hoc committees should be made by the mayor. Um, in discussing this, this gets into the whole role of the mayor. If the mayor is going to keep the role it basically has, the with not being a full member of the council, we feel it's important that the mayor continue to have the ability to make appointments. Because that is really his primary role in the charter. If you take that away, why do we have a mayor at all? Um, at the same time, we recognize that it has been a bone of contention at times as to whom the mayor has selected for ad hoc committees. Now, whether, when the mayor has acted unilaterally without consultation. Uh, that hasn't always happened, but it has happened at times. So we thought maybe putting something in the charters clarifying that both the mayor and the council can establish a ad hoc committee. But the mayor makes the appointments. But with a caveat that the mayor consult with the council. And that consultation would be something as simple as sending out an email saying, hey, I'm getting ready to make these appointments. Do you have any suggestions? So that you have some mechanism to allow the council to feel a part of the process and not end up with an ad hoc committee appointed by the mayor that everybody hates and is going to automatically reject. So anyway, that's, that's what we're kicking around. Don't know if that's where we'll come down or not, but that's what we're talking about. Um, we're also looking at the potential of putting in a preamble in, into the proposal, into a charter that, uh, again has different opinions. Some people feel that it should, it's unnecessary. We've never had one. Why would we have none now? Other people feel it might be a way to set out some basic overall or overarching governmental principles. I know that there's other stuff. There's also a whole set of minor things. We will probably recommend that we amend the nominating paper papers requirement to eliminate the, uh, currently approved method of signing in pencil. Um, but those are, are very minor and shouldn't be a big issue. One of the other things the council should give some thought to here, is under the assumption that you are going to go with a, a, a charter commission. You also will be faced by the time we finish our report with a lot of what I'll call amendments that don't require the charter commission to do it. And you, I think, will have to decide whether you want to put those out on the ballot as just simple amendments. Or if you just want to refer everything to the charter commission and let them do a complete cleanup. Recognizing that the charter commission isn't bound to, to accept any guidance from anyone except themselves. Um, and the public through the public hearing process and stuff. And that, uh, after they get done, they may well end up putting something on the ballot that gets voted down. Uh, I think Austin just had a charter referendum, charter revision referendum that was voted down by eighty percent. So those are some of the issues that you have to have. Glad to answer any questions. Be glad also to ask for your feedback so that I can take it back to the committee. I suspect, I know there were some people from the committee here. I don't know if any of them want to say anything, so I will turn it over to questions and also Dennis or Dale, if you want to check and see if anybody in the audience wants to say something.
So it sounds like a lot of good work, uh, has been happening over the last, uh, couple of months, uh, Ed. Uh, it's greatly appreciated. Uh, so we'll move to counselors. Uh, and then if anyone in the public wishes to comment, we can go kind of back and forth. So councillor, right?
Thank you. And thank you to Ed and the committee. Um, really great work. Um, I also saw the questions that were sent out to the public and I answered those as a citizen, um, not trying to influence as a counselor. I sent it from my private email, all that. But, um, I think one thing that I'm just continuing to think about, especially given the school budget referendum, thinking about past mayoral runoffs. There are some elections that are just so low turnout and folks then question the validity of the results. Um, a- and I don't want that to happen. I think Kathy and her team do such a nice job in the clerk's office, getting the word out, um, and, and working really hard to put on efficient and fair elections. So I, so I think I had made the suggestion about moving the school budget. Are there other ways to help boost participation in the electoral process in these votes that we have? Um, that the charter commission has batted around at all or charter committee, sorry?
You know, the, the, I think everybody's experience, at least in the bigger cities where you have a council and a separate school committee like we have here has been that there's a very low turnout for those val- budget validation collections. You certainly can bump up the turnout to some extent if you have it in conjunction with the, with the June primary. Uh, that's only available every other year. So you end up with one year off here, one year on. I don't know that there's any way to, to deal with that, given the schedule that you're operating under, which is basically set by state law. So once you've approved the school budget, the election has to be held within thirty days. You can adjudge that on, uh, you can juggle that so that it works out for the primary on primary years. But the other years you can't. Uh, the other option, of course, is the public is given the option to say, okay, we don't want to do this anymore. And devote to just let the, the council's decision, uh, guide the, uh, the decision. That has not been a popular option either, uh, although the city of Bangor did vote a couple of years ago to stop having, uh, validation referendums. So with the current system, I don't know how you would ever get the whole, I mean, it's just unless you could come up with some other really exciting thing to put on the ballot every year. Um, you know, maybe a recall of the whole city council. That i- it's just hard to get people excited about voting on that one issue. Um, I think especially in a city where they have a council, they expect you folks to do a lot of that, what I'll call heavy lifting for them. As opposed to them making the decision like in some of the SAD areas where you've got a different kind of whole structure.
Yeah, I think, uh, one other thing that was pitched to me by, by a constituent of mine that I think, um, Heather, please don't throw your monitor, but, um, was to, to try to switch fiscal year ending to be December thirty first. Um, so that way everything could be held during the November election when there are already races up and um, I was just like, well, that sounds wild. Um, but I mean, I feel like now is the time for, for crazy ideas and then scaling them back to what is actually possible.
Keep in mind that the, that the, that the fiscal year, year for the schools is set by the state.
But not for the municipalities, right?
Not for the municipalities.
Yeah.
And, uh, most municipalities used to operate on a calendar year basis, fiscal year. And everybody changed from that because of all of the issues with trying to deal with assessments and all of those other kinds of things and the fact that, you know, it's like the county, counties making decisions now for a year from now. It, it just creates all kinds of problems and issues.
Yeah, it's been, it, we've definitely heard a little bit of that on the county budget committee because, um, gosh, where's Tony Rennie from? I think Green, they're, they're on the same calendar as the county. And so, um, it's always interesting to be like, well, these, these numbers don't mean a ton to the, to the municipalities yet, but, um, so definitely wanted to pass on that, um, wild idea. Um, I think the other thing I'm curious about is would the secretary of state's office be able to help us with funding our elections better? Um, I, I realize that um, instant runoff voting w- would be a barrier because of the technology and the fact that it's proprietary at this moment. But, uh, do they offer any support for, for these types of things? I mean, our, our city has voted for it more than once now. And so it just seems odd that there wouldn't be support to run that election that way.
Kathy?
Uh, yes, thanks, Ed. Um, councillor, the secretary of state's office, uh, by authority, by state statutes only has authority over state elections in Title twenty-one A, and they legally do not have any authority over elections under Title thirty-eight, which is municipal elections. So I believe the answer is no, they, they legally cannot get involved with anything like that. And keep in mind, as Ed was pointing out, the software and the, the hardware, it's so proprietary and it really comes down to a supply and demand. There are There are less than twenty five jurisdictions in the entire country that vote ranked choice voting for their local races, and that's including all municipalities and counties all throughout the country. There's just a real handful that vote their municipal officers that way, and there's probably twenty thousand different jurisdictions. So it's a very, very small demand, so therefore the the supply is very limited and specialized and as such very expensive because most communities don't need it or want it. So that's why it really is costly. I will say that the state is looking to replace the voting machines in June of twenty twenty two. So that is coming up. So as more municipalities might be exploring the opportunity for ranked choice voting on the local level, the state might be inclined to look at some machines that have some software that might be more accessible on the local level. I'm not sure that's still a ways out.
Well, that's great to know. And then just one other thing that had been in this list of questions that I didn't hear currently addressed was the terms of planning board and board of appeals as well as associate members on those boards. Ed, have you guys had discussions on that yet, or is that just kind of down the line?
Yeah, yeah, we have. First, the general feeling is we believe that there's a continuing role for the associate members. In that that kind of is a way to get people into the system. And it also ensures that you have a full panel on making some very important decisions, either in terms of the city's development going forward or on an appeal of an administrative action. We have talked about and and maybe recommending, always have to say may because we're not done yet. That those boards move to three year terms. And that though they be limited to no more than three, three year term. The current language is quite confusing. You have a five year, you're appointed for a five year term, but you can't serve more than you can't serve ten, you can't serve ten years within a decade or something like that. I I'm not even sure that Kathy can figure out how to stay on top of all of that. I think it creates a lot of confusion.
The language says that you can't serve a full five year, you can only serve a full five year term in a ten year period. But if you were appointed to fill a vacancy and you served four and a half years, you then are entitled to your own full five year term, but it does get really sticky regarding tracking and calculating past service.
Yeah.
And we also thought that five years just seemed a little long.
Yeah, that's a lot. I mean, it does require a lot of specialty, but it's so disparate from what the council and school committee and mayor are serving that it seems like bringing those more in line would be helpful. Sorry, I thought of one more question. I'm really monopolizing. Is there any consideration to the number of members for planning board, finance committee, board of appeals? I think if we move towards a nine member council, we've got a nine, I think it's a nine member planning board. Finance committee is only five members. I think reconciling some of those might be helpful, too.
Yeah, we have not talked about that, and that's something I'd certainly bring up to the committee. Before I forget, I will also tell you, there is one committee that we are suggesting move from solely the mayor's appointment to the mayor nominating and the council confirming, and that's the planning board. We think the planning board is of sufficient importance that we should try to get wide representation and try to get moderating forces involved. So that it doesn't become captured on either extreme of no growth or whatever goes. So I think that's that's one of the recommendations we may make.
Thank you for answering everything. I appreciate it.
Thank you, councillor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did the committee discuss potentially just eliminating the board of appeals and moving its responsibilities to the council? Or is that something required by statute for us to have?
It's it's required by state law.
All right, that's all I have. Thanks.
I I will suggest at some point that when you look at at your licenses and permits, you may want to consider giving some additional authority to the board of appeals to deal with some of those rather than having them go to the city council. In terms of appeals of of denials or suspensions of license.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Ed, what was the, I just have a a quick one. Length of terms, was there a direction that the committee was thinking for councillors and mayor?
Yes, what what the committee has talked about that that had some appeal, can't again say for sure, was that council and 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 mayor would be elected for three year terms. And that one third of the council would be on the ballot each year. So it it's kind of it's similar to what's done in Portland and Bangor, although different. Both of those have nine member councils. In Portland, and that's the mayor and and eight with the constitute the council. And in Bangor, it's just the council. They select their own chairs as mayor. In in Bangor, all of those council members run at large. In Portland, I think it's three at large plus the mayor at large plus five by ward or something like that. So it's a little bit different system in each city, and of course, we have our ward system. You know, we we did at least touch on the fact that if you wanted to go to staggered terms, one of the ways to do and and give the mayor the vote, one of the ways to do that is to reduce the number of wards from seven to six. But none of us were willing to look Kathy in the face and make that suggestion. Because that would be just just logistically a nightmare, trying to make that kind of a change.
So I kind of like the way the system is. I I always struggled with that large position. So I'd like your opinion on why why at large is is even out there, and you might have some mystery there, but I like the ability of mayor to have appointing power, but not the vote necessarily unless it's to break, you know, a tie. It really distinguishes the role of city council and mayor, I think. So I'll do, you know, that's just my quick opinion for someone who's been around here for a decade or so, so as in further discussion, but can you talk a little bit briefly on the at large positions?
Yeah, the the concept of at large, first off, it it introduced, the feeling was it would introduce into the council a more 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 global perspective rather than a ward focused perspective. So it would add a new, maybe expand that that focus. I will tell you, I haven't seen that that the ward, I haven't seen wards dominate in the council here, but I have seen that happen in some other communities. Where a council member basically says, I don't care anything at all about the rest of the city. I'm only interested in my ward. But would introduce that broader citywide perspective. It also deals with the issue of if you give the mayor more more authority to vote, then you have an eight member, eight people voting, so you need an at large individual. People on the committee felt uncomfortable with a mayor elected at large and only one councillor elected at large because they saw that as a potential power struggle between the two people elected at large, or you know, the mayor and the mayor in waiting, if you want to call it that. So it came down to it works well to get to nine members in terms of a three year term and an election each year. One of option, one option among many, I don't know that that's the one we'll finally come up with and recommend, and even if we do, it's obviously going to be up to a commission on how to proceed. Simplest way to to do is leave it all as it is now and split the council into two groups, have an election each year. But that just seems to be asking for a lot of extra work in elections and also ending up with the potential the years that you have for council members up or five council members up, whatever number of having still a lot of change over very quickly.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? To the public, if there are any committee members that wish to briefly chime in. Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ed. Appreciate all the work of the committee.
You should probably quickly decide if you want to do have a commission and you want to have it elected in November. You would need to act in this month. So you ought to at least decide if you want to do that. If you just want to have the the election for the commission in November, setting up the commission, then you have time, but.
All right, thank you. And then has 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 the chair of the committee, could you put your recommendation of the committee in reference to councillor pay and the mayor's pay and writing to us?
I'd be happy to do so.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move to item B, discussion. Good night, thank you, Ed. Discussion about returning to in person meetings and let city administrator dotate, take it from here.
Meeting mayor, city councillors, at our last city council meeting, the the basically in terms of preparing the chambers, the city council chambers and city hall. And I'm getting a message that my internet connection is unstable, of course, just as I'm starting to talk. So hopefully, am I coming across okay?
You are right now, but it was, I'll let you know I was if if we have to stop, that's good.
So we we've taken a number of measures to, you know, prepare the city council chambers with barriers and spacing, you know, proper distancing, maximizing the space. In fact, city clerk Monteau and some staff took another look at it last week. Even trying some different configurations to maximize the space in there. In fact, if you look over councillor Joyce's shoulders in his video, you can actually get a small glimpse of what's going. There he goes, even helps me out, so. That's, I I believe that we've taken every measure from a staff standpoint to to, you know, prepare the space in a safe manner to not only have the council and staff in there, but also to receive public, obviously on a limited basis. If we had overflow, we have plans for that. If there was a capacity issue in the chambers for a particular item, we have ability to space folks out into the hallway as well as into that back conference room where we typically have executive session. So really, this discussion, I would turn it over to the mayor and and council for some feedback and and discussion on that. But I can say that staff are ready, willing and able to return to in person as soon as the council is prepared to do so. And I'll turn it back for discussion.
All right, thank you. Comments from councillors? Councillor, right?
Sure, I'll jump in. So I am just so grateful for staff doing, I mean, moving furniture. I don't think it's in anyone's job description, but you know, Kathy and her team, of course, do it. It feels like the safety of everyone was taken into consideration in this process, and I personally want to show off that the vaccine works and that it's safe and encourage more folks to get it, and I think a return to in person might help some folks who are having some of that hesitancy at this point, perhaps. So I I'm willing, able, ready. I think if I never hear you're on mute again, I would be a very happy councillor.
Okay, thank you, councillor Collette.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very supportive of this. We, the finance committee with councillor Lee Clement and I met yesterday, I believe, yes, it was yesterday at the Public Works location, and it felt really good just seeing everyone for, you know, we haven't seen each other for a long time, so I definitely think that getting back in person and to see each other too would definitely benefit benefit us, definitely me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Jalinas.
I'm also in support of returning in person. I'm just curious what the policy would be around masking for folks that are there and unvaccinated. I see the sign when I go into city hall saying, you know, if you're vaccinated, it's optional. If not, you've got to mask up. So I just didn't know if there'd been some discussion around city council meetings.
The policy would remain, great question, councillor Jalinas, the policy would remain the same as unless, of course, we were received additional guidance from CDC or or any changes with that, but in terms of the policy today, if no changes, then it would remain that that vaccinated folks would have the option of a mask and unvaccinated would be required to wear a mask.
I have, you know, I have one question. Zoom actually did do a couple of good things. I think it really opened public meetings to a a segment of the population that that may not necessarily be able to attend meetings. So do we have the ability to keep kind of that piece so that if the public wanted to to speak, they would have access to Zoom or what are your thoughts on that?
We've looked at that. I guess with technology, you can do anything. Yes, I think that we could, but I would say that I was cautioned on the sound quality. Significantly, it just, there's no good, perfect way to do it. It's the best answer I can give you. Can we do it? We can make it work, you know, in in, you know, in a in a pinch if we had to. But it would not be the recommended to do any, it would not be our recommendation to do any type of hybrid. I I would recommend either all in on Zoom or all in on person and and really try to maintain that best we can.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from council? We 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 have to try to give some direction this evening. Councillor Jalinas.
Yeah, I'm in agreement about the hybrid stuff. I think it's awkward, it is possible, but it still ends up being a very awkward meeting. But I do agree about accessibility. You know, like I'm, for example, I'm on vacation and out of town next week, and I was going to, if we were still zooming, I was going to zoom in. If I had enough bandwidth, but obviously I wouldn't be able to do that if it was in person. So there's benefits, but I think the hybrid thing is really a mess, to be honest, having, doing those a lot.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Jensen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I completely agree with councillor Jalinas and everyone else that hybrid models are not going to be effective for us. I'm okay with meeting back in person. If if one of my colleagues isn't, then I would probably change that to a no as well. I just want to be respectful of my colleagues, so. Not just councillors, to any of the staff members that, you know, work with us every single meeting, too. So if anyone still has some some holdup, I got your back. I won't support meeting in person.
Okay, thank you, councillor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in favor of going back in person. However, councillor Jalinas brought up a point. We're moving to summer schedule here next month. Perhaps July and August would be the end of our Zoom meetings and we resume in person come September. There are people that have vacation plans and plans moving around. If it would facilitate those plans for them to be able to get together in a meeting by Zoom, I have no problem with that. I can go either way on it, but I just bring that up for discussion. That may be something to consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from council? Councillor Jensen?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just getting a thought from councillor Clement. Would staff prefer that we kind of keep the the Zoom meetings, like was just mentioned until the end of the summer, so that way if people did want to travel and maybe just want to zoom in? I just don't know if like if staff had any input on that or or what.
You know, I I can certainly thank you for asking. I I think I don't know if staff would have a strong opinion either way. I get, I think at this point, I I think we would be okay with waiting till September. I think that's perfectly fine. And and utilizing Zoom and it's working and it to all the points that were made, I think are a good point. But if the majority of the council wanted to move to June fifteenth instead and and go in person, we're okay with that as well. I really, I would certainly ask other staff on here, deputy city administrator Doughty or finance director Hunter or city clerk Monteau, if they have something to add, please. I'm I'm not the only one with an opinion on that, so.
And keep in mind, we go on a summer schedule, you know, for staff and the council to try to make sure that they get those periods where they can take a vacation and know that will not be a council meeting unless it's a dire emergency. All right, so any staff member can raise their hand at any point. Councillor Joy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Clements and Jensen brought up good points with regards as to the summer schedule. I myself would just soon meet here at city hall. As you can see, I've had problems with my computer and I felt that it was better to be in this room. It feels really nice to tell you that, but fact of the matter is, I can go either way. Bringing up the summer schedule, I never thought of that aspect. So I I'm open either way, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Myself personally, I'm so ready to get face to face with all of you. That five minutes after meetings where we walk out and kind of shoot the breeze and get to know each other. I mean, we all know each other, but it's just so much different. And then we pick on one councillor for a few minutes and everybody, you know, just the smile and anyway, I'm so ready. Councillor Pennill?
Thank you. And I I definitely miss being in person and having that that little bit of camaraderie after the meeting when when everybody does get a chance to to talk. Councillor Clement and Jensen, you know, brought up some valid points of we are getting ready to go into our summer schedule with only two meetings. And then also staff's input on that as well. I'd be really curious to to see that. I'm more inclined at at this point in the game head back into the in-person meetings, you know, with September. I know how important it is to meet with. Do the in-person meetings. But with only a couple of meetings, I don't, I don't think much is going to change that hasn't already happened. That's that's my my take on it.
Okay, thank you. So we have one person in the public. I'd just like to give them an opportunity and then we'll bring it back to the council. If we could just bring Linda Scott in. Good evening.
Hi, I had to take myself off mute. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this. I just wanted to bring up the point that as a planning board member, we have been meeting in Zoom as well. And I was just wondering as as the council thinking about how that's going to be approached. So when council, if you go back to in-person meetings, and I myself cannot wait to go back to in-person meetings. But when you do that, does that mean that the Finance Committee and the Planning Board go back to in-person meetings? And should we not be asking the Chair of each of those committees to talk to and speak to the staff of like Planning and Co. to ensure that everybody is ready for that? I just wanted to bring that up.
No, thank you. I don't, you know, I believe each board or committee can can decide if they want to go in person or not. Dennis, is that correct? And the Finance Committee. Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. But yes, it it would be the committee, just like the Finance Committee is, I think you were starting to say. I mean, I think they had a discussion and, you know, made a decision and and were able to go back. So what I certainly can say to Linda's question is you know, I will, I will let staff know that the staff that supports the various committees to to bring that conversation up in in an upcoming agenda and allow the the each in the board, board and committee to start to have that discussion and and make those decisions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Linda. All right, so there's two options on the table and I it's really difficult to say what the majority feels, but starting in September or starting June fifteenth. So we've got to try to pinpoint that. Councillor Wright?
Let's just go for September. I think, you know, to councillor Jelinez's point, I would love to have her here next week. I think, you know, that's it's too too what's that, you know, time, months notice, gosh, to to get your things done over the summer and and maybe work remotely on on our constituents, the people's work for a couple more months and then September button it back up. I think schools will have a lot different outsets then too, so parents and that sort of thing. So I think.
So let's uh, so let's see, get a thumbs up if folks support councillor Ray's thought on September.
And that would be the September seventh meeting, right Kathy? I just want to make sure I got the date right.
All right, so I I I feel sorry for councillor Joy because I'm here all the time. So if I need to pick on somebody, he's going to be the only one here as we walk out. So. All right, good. Well, thank you. I think we've given the the clear discussion and I think it gives staff time to, you know, really prepare for it. So I think that works out okay. All right, with that, we'll move to item C, which is a request from some of the leaders of mayors. Dennis, do you want to introduce this as we pull them in?
Sure, we will move in, Dale will move in the representatives from Mears very quickly. What what's occurred here is they they did make a request, Mears has made a request for a support letter to the Mayor's office. After the Mayor reviewing it and looking at their request, they felt that this was a city council discussion and and decision. You know, in terms of the support letter. Since then, staff, Deputy City Administrator and I, Doughty and I met with the representatives and concurred with the Mayor's opinion that this really should come to the council for consideration and and discussion. So I've asked the two representatives, Abdou Kadir and Rulan, Rulan, Ron to just provide you with a, you know, five-minute update here. And we're just looking for some direction on if the council would like us to work with them with that support letter. We provided a draft support letter that they provided to us in an email to you today. So you could at least see the the basic language. Ultimately, if the council did decide that they wanted us to provide the support letter, we would update it with the Lewiston specific information. If you look at the letter, it has a section for us to update a bit in there. And staff would get that. And I believe the deadline that they needed, which is why this was time sensitive, is the tenth of June is the deadline. I'm I'm seeing the dotted heads, so I think I've got the date right. And I think at this point, I would just turn it over briefly to the Mears representatives.
Good evening. So I'm not sure who will be presenting, but go ahead and take it away and welcome this evening.
Yes, go ahead. I I just want to thank you all for inviting us and thank you Dale and Dennis for meeting with us a couple of weeks ago about about this support. We were approached a couple of months ago by ECDC. One of the nine voluntary agency organizations that resettles refugees into this country. And those nine organizations or agencies have affiliates in every state that help them welcome their families coming to this country. And as we all know, Catholic Charities is the only one in the state that has that resettled refugees in here. So one of the challenges that ECDC encounters is like, is if they have a family ties, if they're settling families who have a family ties in Maine, they have a struggle because they don't have an affiliate who supports them, who supports this family when they when they come in here. So they they approached us and they told us that if we have a families who are coming in here, we want you to support them. And one of the support that we, they want us to provide is finding them employment, helping them with the basic needs that when someone comes in when someone comes in need is because one of the challenges that the new people face, the new refugees who is going to come, when they come in is is knowing where things are. And that's a struggle I had when I come to this country. And I don't want people to go the same issues that I went through. And and that's why we we asking the support of the city so that we can help those people who come in here so that they can become self-sufficient, they can be contributing members of our of our great city. And these families who are coming in already have a family ties here. That means that either their wife or their husband requested them to come in here. So a lot of them are like that one. So when they come here, so they have a family member. So they're either going in apartment with their wife or their 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 family members and on all that. And our job would be to help them provide support, show them where things are and find them employment within three months or within eight months so that they can be self-sufficient.
Yeah, just I wanted to add that Mears was created back two thousand and eight. And we have been providing services, different services to family, youth services as well as case management for those who struggle with mental health. And things like employment, education, citizenship was major things that we have been providing. Things that now we're looking for, it's something that we have, we have been already providing. And also not only like the reception and placement, but beyond that, it's something that Mears is very equipped culturally and linguistically. The survival English is something that we have been providing since two thousand and eight. The citizenship is also through like up to three thousand individual has gone through to our program and passed their test. And because of that, a lot of people are now feeling more integrated into the community. And as well, we have a lot of connections with employers, a lot of stakeholders. And we have been getting a lot of support from the community members, hundred of hundreds of supports. So that's why we're asking for your support today. And this is something that we feel we're very confident and we have the system already in place. This is, we have about twenty-two staff who speaks nine different languages. So that's why we feel very equipped to provide those services.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Councillor Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I think I have two questions. So the first is is it part of the application that you have to have the support of the municipality to become an affiliate? And then the second question is, what is the whole application? Like, if we submit this letter, does it automatically happen, I guess?
Um, yes, we have to, we have to get a support from a local municipal municipality. And that's why we approached the Mayor and then we met with Dale and Dennis. And and the whole process, the the application approval depends on the Department of State. So each or nine of those organizations have the opportunity to submit an application to create an affiliate in in across the country. So the application goes to the Department of State, they reviewed and they make the decision. If they want to add an affiliate in in states or if they don't want, so it depends on Department of State. But we are hopeful that with the expected numbers of of people approved within this fiscal year, I think we are hopeful that once we get the support from everybody that we will we will be approved. So that's kind of like, yeah, hopefully.
Okay, it's just, it's a pretty quick ask that I think has wide ranging implications. And so so I I I do have some hesitancy, but I want to hear what other councillors have to say.
And let me know quickly, let me just ask this. Are there other ECBOs that that are in the process of trying to provide the same service? I've heard there's several possibilities.
Not from that, not from that organization, ECDC. I think there may be, there may be, not ECBOs, not community-based organizations. There may be one of those national organizations, one of the nine organizations I had, they're eyeing to have an office in Portland. So and and again, that's not an affiliate. That is one of the nine agencies that is at all so they're thinking of having an office in Portland. But I did not hear anything from an ECBO. And and we will be the only one from that agency that will be submitted an application. So they don't have any other person.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Khalid.
Thank you. One question I had, Abdallah, and one is you mentioned Catholic Charities. Have you tried to, you know, speak with them and try to meet with them to maybe become a partner with them? And try to see how you, you know, your your organization as well as Catholic Charities? And I don't know how long Catholic Charities has been doing this work, but they're well-recognized across the state. But just trying to see if you two have met and try to build a partnership so that they can also, you know, support you guys to to, you know, become an agency or I'm just trying to see if you guys have not in trying to collaborate.
We had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago and we have Talan and other groups from Catholic Charities coming in. But they cannot have an affiliate, another affiliate in the state because they're already a settlement agency. So they cannot form another affiliate. So another, one of the nine agencies can form an affiliate, but Catholic Charities cannot have another affiliate. So they already have an office here that is running their settlement programs. And and again, nine, these nine agencies get a specific number annually and they decide where they put those numbers. So Catholic Charities get, and they get like fairly like the same numbers Catholic Charities get, wow, twenty. And this agents we are affiliated gets twenty. So then they decide where they want to put it in. So I ever got, everybody got their own onto one. And Catholic Charities again has a lot of affiliates and this organization that we we're trying to partner has affiliates across the country. So this is the only place, I think, in 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 this area that they don't have it. And they thought that, and they have had a lot of families who come here and who want to come here, but they didn't have an office here. They didn't have an affiliate. So they approached her and said, since you're already doing this work and you're working with this community, how about if you formalize it and 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 help this family start and using this country. So.
Thank you. That's it for now, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councillor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two or three different things here. First of all, the Mayor had concerns that this should come to the council. Our administrator and deputy administrator after meeting had concerns that it should come to the council. I have concerns that we're asked on June eighth for something that's needed on June tenth. I've always said that lack of forethought or planning on an individual's part should not constitute an emergency online. And I'm just wondering why we're hearing about this on the eighth of June, when they want it for the tenth of June. How long have we known about this?
I can start with that, Councillor. The request did come in May. We did not meet. Staff wasn't able to meet with them. I I think it was a little over a week ago. And this was the first council meeting that was actually available within their timeline. So it has been a, it is a short time, but their deadline, I believe, is being dictated by the application process that they need to meet.
My concern is we're hearing about this for the first time tonight. We haven't had a chance to discuss it or really batted around. So I I don't know that I can support it based on that alone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. I I guess hearing, like, I think we got the email this morning about nine thirty that it would be on the agenda tonight and that's just not enough time for me. Actually, it's not even on the agenda. So I think most in the public probably aren't aware this is even being discussed. So I I don't really want to make any comments about, like, if we had enough time to to vote on this, like, you know, what we would do. I'd be curious about what the impact would be on like local housing. So I know we have kind of a housing crunch right now and are we going to have housing available for everybody? I want to make sure that the school system is well-equipped and that, like, you know, we maybe know where, what schools, districts, students will be in, what specific elementary school they might be going to. I'd probably want to know the impact on general assistance and what that might be. So, you know, anything like this, it's an important issue. And so we we as council would have to do our due diligence, ask these questions and make sure, you know, check everything off ahead of time. And one day is just not enough time to do it. So as a councillor, you know, we just don't have enough time. So I mean, I would say table of this. I I wouldn't want to oppose it. I might don't want to take any anything away from the good work that Mears does. Anyone who knows, you know, Abdou Kadir, Rowan knows that they do a lot for the community. They do a lot for a lot of people in my ward especially, and I'm extremely grateful to them. So I guess I apologize. I can't support this today. We just don't have enough time to to do the work. So, yeah.
Okay, any Councillor Julyness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we were to postpone this a bit, am I right in assuming that you wouldn't have opportunity to reapply to be an affiliate for another year? Like, what was, help us understand the application process and the timeline in the event that we said we need to defer this for a bit to do a little more work? What would that mean for for the affiliation?
Again, we will have to report whatever comes out in this meeting today and 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 let them know what happens. And if you all decide that you need more time to think about this one, and we can just let them know that this the council will need more time to go to think more about this one. And and we can submit the the application and see us and see what they say. But but again, the housing issues, that's something that we're aware of. That's something that we deal with. But but again, the housing issues, that's something that we are aware of. That's something that we deal with. Every day on the school, we this we have talked to landlords, we have communicated with the school. And these families that are coming in will not have any impact on the GA. Because there will be a refugee that will be supported by federal federal money. So it's not, nothing is going to be coming from there. From the city. So there is no cost from the city side. So just want to be clear about that.
So I I need, I think I need you to explain that a bit more because, yes, there are some funding that are federal funding that provided initially, but that that's not long term, is it?
That is eight. That is eight months. So eight months. And that's why they want to. Yeah, eight months for them to. To be on their feet. And that eight months, our job is to help them find employment. And 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 we will make sure that they they find employment within those eight months. And 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 again, they will not. Be if they have a family, again, they all have their documentation. They all have their their I ninety four. So they they. They they come here legally. So there is no issue with with legalism and all that. They qualify with any federal findings that. That comes with it. But when they come in here, the ECDC that we're partnering with will support this family for eight months. And 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 again, within that eight months, when we have to work with them and get employment and 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 connect them with services.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm in the same boat as. Counselor Clement's as well as Counselor Jensen. It's such a short time period that that we've heard about this. We don't even have. I mean, other than what we're doing now, the short discussions we're having, it's not in depth. As I feel it should be. With other pertinent questions that may come up and and responses to those. How many? How many individuals would we be talking about with regards as to? I I guess coming into Lewiston is or or is that something that they're working with individuals now? That stay here in Lewiston at this time?
We we, yeah, we are anticipating if we if we get it and. We're not going to be taken hundred individuals, more than that. And again, more than eighty or ninety percent of those already have family ties in here. So their husband or their wife is already in here. So whether we approve for this one or not, they will come to Lewiston. So the question is who's going to support them when they come here? So that's where we come in. So those families will come here whether we approve for this. Well, whether we approve for this application or not, because they already have, again, family members who. File to their citizenship, they already passed. So and they will be coming here in Lewiston. And and there's nothing we can do about that. And and where we come in is helping them and supporting them so that they can get employment within that eight months. So that they can become self sufficient, so that they don't need any benefit or any support from the government. So that's where we're coming in.
Yeah, I just wanted also to add that one hundred may not be all one same time will be. A few for every month. Maybe it's through the year, the hundred families. That's the maximum that we are open or maybe even less. So it's not one time people can show up at the same time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And so to clarify, either way, those folks are will be are planning to come to Lewiston anyway. So I appreciate you sharing that because that's important for us to know. I don't think I still think it doesn't change some of the feelings expressed by the council that. We we just are obligated to really look into these things and to make sure our community is prepared. So thank you, though, for sharing that. Counselor Clement? Counselor Clement? Okay, I think he froze up. And so I'll move to Counselor Ray, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I do also appreciate that clarification that the these folks are planning to be here anyways. And and I think it's great that they'll be reunited with their families. It it still is a hard thing to it feels like we would be rubber stamping without the time to understand really what's going on. And I I think some of these base questions are about process. You know, haven't haven't even been outlined, unfortunately. Normally. You guys have been around city government. There is like a recommendation from city administration and that sort of thing. And I just think. No one feels like they've had the time to do that. Because there is so much going on otherwise. I think Counselor Delinis asked this question, but I I just need the answer repeated, I think. So if. If you do not apply by June tenth, what is the next deadline you could apply?
So we can still, again, as I mentioned, we can still submit the applications. And and again, we have to. Report what the the result of this meeting and and let them know that we have a meeting with you and and also share your concerns too. And again, this application for us, it came to us in May too. So it was just the Department of State. Once the president announced the number of people coming in, they just posted that. And within May, they approached us. Within May, we started the process. So that's why we have everything is just kind of like. Coming in in a short notice for everybody, not only not only this, but also for ourselves too. But again, we we will share the concerns. I we hear about the concerns about the housing, the school. And on all those things. Again, those are some of the things that we do. We work with families all the time. Every day and 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 the hundred individuals, as the others say, they're not families, they're individuals. And again, almost like eighty ninety percent of those are. One person either coming for their wife or for their husband. And 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 which might not require schooling. Kind of reduce the school issue concerns. And 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 the focusing for us would be again, finding them employment and connecting them with resources and services. Yeah.
So I appreciate that the reiteration of that because I think in our minds, it's like a yes or a no. Is is it helpful? You know, Counselor Jensen just expressed, you know, gratitude for the work that's already been done by mirrors. I would reflect the same, especially for. Folks in my ward who have utilized those services. Is there some nuance to how that's filled out on the application? Or is it just yes and no?
No, we can. We can. In the application, again, we can put concerns. And again, we talk to everybody. We talk to. They had the landlords. We have we took a lot of lands and say, one of the concerns, we have them. And then we see housing issues. That and that's why we don't want to take huge numbers. And that's why we don't want to take a lot of people one time. So we want to take like two people this month and then wait three months. Again, one, 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 one individual. So. The hundred is not going to be coming one time. And we might not even get the hundred. Again, the fiscal year starts in October, I believe, in July for the federal. And that's like the whole twenty twenty, end of twenty twenty one to full twenty 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 two whereby you might have only one. One person coming in this month, and then you have to wait three months and then another person comes in. So and it's a long process. That they go through before they come here. And again, I hear all your concerns. I know this has been a short time for all for us and and for you. For you all. And and if you say no, I totally understand. But and and again, this is something that we have been doing for those of you. Who know that what we do. And and regardless, if people come in, whether we get this approved or not, we will support whoever comes in. To to the city and and help them. Be self sufficient.
Thank you. Counselor Khalid.
Thank you. I just have one quick question for Dennis. Does Catholic Charities contact you when, you know, there's new arrivals or? Understand that.
Yeah, I we do not. I'm not aware in terms of administration does not get contacted directly. I would need to verify if another department in. You know, maybe potentially social services may get an alert type thing. I would have to verify that with the director, but I'm not aware of any formal notification to our office, at least at this point.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Counselor Delinis.
Thank you. So I just want to better understand this. I am very aware of the work that mirrors is doing. And I know that you have a strong foundation of support and. And that sort of thing. I'm if I think about a hundred individuals coming into our community regardless. Help me understand the significance or the importance of this affiliation. What is it? What's going to be different? Like? I just want to better understand that. I think you you got at that a little bit, but I'm a little lost on that.
So what the what this affiliate is going to do is they're going to fund. The people who are going to be working with these individuals when they come in. So but it will give us the opportunity to hire case managers paid by this agency. To work with this family until they become independent or within that eight months. So that's something that we don't have right now. And again, we have people who come in, but we don't have those funding right now. So we're just formalizing so that we can get the support from them.
Funding thing. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, funding. Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor? Also, all right, Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question in addition. I noticed in the material that we were presented, references made in several places to Lewis and Auburn area. Was the same request made for our counterparts across the river in the city of Auburn? Were we the only ones that were asked to? To provide this? Thank you.
Now, you are the only one. We did not approach Lu and Auburn yet. And. And we thought that, again, since our office is based in Lewiston and a lot of people who we work with are in in Lewiston. And ninety nine percent of the people who work with us from Lewiston, and we believe that just appoint the Lewiston instead of Auburn. But. Yeah.
And I don't think they will also count any letters from any other city. It's only Lewiston, instead of Lewiston that they want. I just also wanted to explain that this checklist for the application. As Ron also explained, whatever comes out from the city council meeting today, it's something that we will have to also indicate in the application. So it will be the state department that who will make the final decision whether because and they will also look all the supports later that goes with the application. And we can have all kind of supports from state legislators, from landlords, schools, everywhere, employers, all kind of ECBOs. So it's just I wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, the council can correct me, but I'll try to summarize what I'm hearing. I think the council is concerned that we're being asked to make such an important decision with very little time to give some thought to it, to allow staff to vet it. And then, you know, we really do have to look at housing and social services. And are there other organizations that will be doing the same? If there are multiple organizations with different immigrant immigrant groups, you know, we potentially could see well over a hundred. So. I think these are all just questions that the council has to feel comfortable with. And I I personally believe Mayor's does an incredibly good job with our students and helping families, you know. Moving in a direction that they can feel self sufficient and and to help people be part of this community. So you do a great job there. But we do have to have confidence in Mayor's beyond that. This is what we hear and see from people, but we need the evidence to support that Mayor's is capable of providing this service. All things that I think that can be accomplished, because I think you two are probably two of the most. Smart and, you know, caring for our community. So keep doing what you're doing. But I just think there are steps that the council needs to see have been taken. So. Any objection to by the council, anything I just said? All right, so I I think we have more work to do before the council is prepared to to take that next step. Okay.
And we are willing to answer or or any questions or or anything from our end.
Okay, thank you. And don't hesitate to reach out to our city administrator or deputy city administrator if you need further guidance or kind of what the next step should be. All right, counselors, we all good with that? So thank you both for attending tonight. And we look forward to talking to you again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. So with that, we're moving into an executive session. We have two schedules. So Kathy, can you just read the? Information?
Sure. Executive session number one, executive session regarding consultation with the city attorney. Requested action to enter into an executive session pursuant to main revised statutes annotated title one, section four oh five six E. To discuss a legal matter with the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Khalid, seconded by Counselor Joy. All or call the role, please.
Counselor from Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Mr. Mayor, having a lot of problems with stability. I probably missed thirty five forty percent of the last five minutes, reconnected several times. I assume the vote now is for executive session?
It is.
On the agenda. Okay, is everybody else having problems? Being automatically logged in and stuff like that?
No.
Just that we're so far out in the country out here that the cable can't reach us tonight, I guess. I don't know. All right, no, yes.
Thank you, Counselor. And Ward seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and with that vote in, do we need a break? Or is everybody want to go right into the exec? We need a break? Okay, so let's take five to eight minutes and then we'll head into the executive session.
Okay.
Okay.